Amount we would need to spend to do a repair job and minor cosmetic improvements to town hall.
Good evening, thank you for coming. We're going to walk through three different plans that we've been discussing over a period of time. And we're going to have a conversation, so let's discuss them, let's figure out what the best plan is for the community. I'd like to start highlighting three plans that we have, one, which is the renovation or restoration of historic town hall. That will include the renovation of historic town hall and the removal of the annex. The second plan would be a quoted cosmetic repair of 41 Highland as a whole. So it's repairing 41 Highland, addressing code compliant issues and cosmetic repairs. The third would be One Pleasant, it's a new construction, we would be purchasing the first floor of that building. It's a mixed use building, there's 14 residential units upstairs. The town would be purchasing one condo, which is on the first floor. So we'll move into some of the repairs that will happen to historic town hall. So for historic town hall, we're looking at a full renovation and demolition of the annex. We, in the price, are going to see a large difference between repairs to historic town hall minus the annex and then repairs to the entire building. That cost is being driven by securing the historic town hall foundation with underpinning. We will be adding restrooms and securing the envelope of the building within your roof and windows and updating the utility systems and fire suppression. The estimated cost for that is about $10.7 million. I do want to say that while you're hearing these costs, these estimates, these are being pulled off of the 2023 bid. There's been no formal design done for these plans, however, these are the best estimates that we can come to at this present time. The next slide, we'll talk about the current condition of historic town hall. Here are some illustrations of, you know, some of the challenges we have. You have peeling plaster, old electrical, the windows not secure. And just the overall meeting space isn't really indicative of the Cohasset community. So we want to make that space nicer, so the community can enjoy it. The next is cosmetic repair of 41 Highland. So these repairs include securing the building envelope again, within your roof and windows, updating the utility system, new parks, cosmetic upgrades such as interior paint, ceiling tiles, light fixtures, carpet, and the exterior maintenance would be paint, landscape and hardscape. The estimated cost here is approximately $8.4 million. I do again want to highlight, these are prices that were pulled off of 2023 bid. This has not been designed and there are no bids in place, or else this is just an estimate. The next slide just highlights the condition of the current annex. We've heard reference to this 2018 EBI report, property condition report. You'll see here that they highlighted items such as the roof that had a year left. However, it is now 2024, we still haven't addressed the roof. So there's things in that report that have never been addressed. And I think it's time that the citizens, you know, read through that report and understand that in 2018, these were failing and it's time to address them. So next, we'll talk about One Pleasant Street. So you've probably heard prior conversations of the town leasing for a temporary space for a period of five years, the first floor, with an option to purchase. Since those conversations, the property owner has now asked to condo the entire building. So it's now 14 residential units upstairs and one condo unit on the first floor. In the RFP proposal, he gave us a price of $3.2 million to purchase that first floor. And that is where the select board is leaning. That's the floor plan, it does fit all of the staff, albeit a little tight, but nevertheless, it does fit all the town hall staff. And here are just the cost breakdowns. Once again, I highlighted the major items that are driving the cost, but you'll see the price has been escalated based on 2023 bids. So if you're looking at 24 and 25, depending on when we can get these designs done and start implementing, you're starting with a $10.7 million cost, $8.4 million and a $14.8, $14.4 million cost to completely renovate 41 Highland Ave. And that would allow you to move some malls, create additional space within the building. So I guess we're holding questions to the end?
Yeah, let's hold questions until the end, but Michelle, if you could just briefly outline, I think folks in this audience probably understand, but for folks at home and others who view this later on, if you could briefly explain the, sort of the general restrictions that the government faces with respect to building and construction prices. You know, prevailing wage, OPM, these sorts of requirements that are unique to us as compared to others, when looking at the prices and when factoring in what we as the government have to do.
Sure, so anytime a municipality has a project of any scale over $50,000, we're required to bid it. The public bidding process asks that we send out an RFP, we get responses back and we award to the most responsible bidder. It's not often based on price. And so sometimes people get these bids and then they say, we had a budget cost of $1 million. Why are the bids coming in $2 million? It's all on the bids on your project. So that's one constraint we have. If we have a project over $1.5 million, we are required to hire an OPM. And that OPM does drive the cost of the project death, however, you do get someone to oversee your project. So it's a double edged sword, right? You're paying more money, but you have more oversight. So those are some of the differences between public bidding versus private bidding or residential bidding.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Michelle. Now we're going to have Mr. Longley present for the citizen's petitioner. I know some folks may have questions, but we can, we'll take everyone in order.
My name is Peter Longley, 12 Rustic Drive. First, I want to thank Eugene for organizing this room and for allowing me to speak tonight. Thank you. So I've been working with Rob Dorminson and Kurt Brewer to prepare for tonight. There have been other citizens from Cohasset who've also been involved. I have three points that I will cover tonight. Number one is the citizen's petition. Number two is an item that I've referred to as street talk, is the street talk of the points. Number three is a comparison of plans for moving to One Pleasant versus staying at 41 Highland, our town hall. On the first point, the petition. The petition proposes the beginning of a comprehensive three-year plan to save town hall. Plan addresses immediate restoration of our cultural resource, the auditorium space, for public and town uses. Upgrades, the second item, upgrades and modernization to systems that are not functioning. Third is repairs and beautification. Fourth is continued presence of town offices on the town common, where they have been since 1770. And last, and this is really a driving force, a fiscally driven solution that does not require an override to raise taxes. Now, the petition is limited to just phase one, which has four work items. The first is to restore the use of the 1857-1929 wing by installing sprinklers, which addresses safety and occupancy concerns. The second is a new roof for the entire building, which will protect and extend the life of the building. The third is replacements and upgrades to the H&amp;E AC system, which will address comfort issues for the occupants. And the fourth is to rebuild the brick front walk to take away any concerns for safety. The price of this phase is $1 million. Phase two, which requires a future vote next year, will address 10 more items, including paint, new carpet, new toilet rooms, added insulation, new windows, and additional system upgrades. 10 items in all. Phase three, also a future vote, two years from now, will address nine more items, including accessibility upgrades, modernize the elevator, upgrade the stage and changing areas, and exterior updates. Each phase is targeted by cost, not by scope. The limit is $1 million per year for each of three years. When we run out of money, we'll stop. If we can't complete all the items within the yearly $1 million targets, some items may be deferred. Bottom line, our goal is to restore appearance, functionality, and life to our town hall, so that it can remain useful right where it is, right where visitors and newcomers expect to see it, right where it belongs, on the town common. Now, the next section, part two, that I want to talk about is something called street talk. And this comes with the issue of perceptions. There's eight separate items here. First perception is that the annex is structurally inadequate. Now, through the four prior designs, none of the architects who participated in that reported that the existing structure was inadequate. There's no corroborating professional report on that. The second perception is that the town hall is too small. But the response is that it's larger than One Pleasant by more than 5,000 square feet. The third item is that the annex is unappealing. Our response is yes, but phase two includes some cosmetic upgrades. The fourth item is repair or renovation of the annex is more expensive than new construction. But the response is that repairs are vendor specific. If by keeping our contracts small, targeted at $1 million, we don't need general contractors handling multiple trades and we can avoid double E and OPM. So there's a minimum overhead. The fifth item is that the historic building and the annex are not code compliant. Well, the response is that existing buildings were code compliant when they were built, but we'll erase that question by fixing any matters of non-compliance that have been determined since then as a part of our project. The sixth item is that there's no compelling reason to keep the functions of town government on the historic common. But our response is we prize our historic common. It's continuity with the past and 250-year precedent as the seat of our town government. The seventh item is that the historic building can be separated from the annex. But the response is that the annex and the original building exist like Siamese twins. They are joined by shared heating systems, shared electrical systems, bathrooms, and an elevator. If you remove the annex, you remove the elevator. The eighth item is that, the eighth and last perception is that the historic building could become a cultural center. Well, our response is, we agree. Yes, we intend with our project to enable the continuation of it and its future use as a cultural center. Now, the third and last section that I want to talk about is to compare the One Pleasant alternative with the alternative to remaining at 41 Highland. On One Pleasant, the actual usable square footage is 7,200. I believe that 7,800 that we saw before was a rentable figure. But when you do a moment calculation, you realize the actual usable area is 7,200. At 41 Highland, the usable area is more than 12,800 square feet. 78% more square footage at 41 Highland. As for parking, well, One Pleasant has 30 spaces, but a number of those have to be dedicated to the condo purchasers. And there's two handicap spots. So there will be either 14 or 16 spaces available for the 17 employees that work for the town at 41 Highland. I'm sorry, 27 employees work at 41 Highland. 41 Highland has parking for 60. The next item is that One Pleasant is directly beside the commuter rail with no sound barrier. At 41 Highland, we're directly beside the Tannery. As for One Pleasant, there's voting offsite at Wilt Cut Commons, but at 41 Highland with the restored auditorium, we'll be able to have voting there again. But we'll also have the benefit of holding other cultural events in the auditorium space. Lastly, and you know, I may be off a little bit on the total project value, it's somewhere 12 to 14 million if you look at the total cost of moving to One Pleasant, because you still have to figure out what to do with 41 Highland as a part of the cost of that project. That's somewhere 12 to 14 million dollars versus our project, which after three years is 3 million. Three one-year, 1 million expenditures, which will be paid for out of, through the appropriation process. It does not require an override. Parker, are there any additional details that you want to mention?
Well, I did put together some comparison boards to illustrate the differences between 41 Highland and One Pleasant Street. One is the exterior appearance and having a town hall with a sense of place. But this board really just illustrates the cost there, where we think that the renovation, if done frugally and with great care, could be less expensive than One Pleasant Street. The other big factor is parking, where we currently have 16 parking spots at town hall in the lot. We also have a street park. The One Pleasant Street only offers 30 parking spots, but 14 of those are dedicated to the residential units and likely in practice, more than the 14 would be used by the residential unit, which really pinches, is a small area here in the middle that shows the available parking spaces, the 16 parking spaces in our current lot. The other big factor is that while the office space at 41 Highland is 78% bigger than what's proposed at One Pleasant Street, the overall building with the authority, the basement area is actually three times the size of what's proposed for a town hall at One Pleasant. The land wouldn't be owned by the town anymore. We have one and a half acres at 41 Highland. The condo that we bought can't be expanded, there really is no additional area. If we find out that, hey, it's too small in five, 10, 15 years, it can't be expanded. There's no auditorium, no archive, all clerks, wall, VP doesn't director, even the mailroom and the break room are included in the land. And what we did in terms of the cost to solidify that we think we could do a project for 1 million in a year is, I haven't registered our project with 30 something years of experience, we need 40 something years of experience. So we pooled our resources. I've done a number of municipal projects and cost estimating for federal government projects as well as NAFC or state funded projects. So just with the four categories in the roof of work, the first one is the roof. What we have is 103 squares. The means book says $12 a square foot maximum, we have $123,000. In 2019 annual town meeting budget, it was estimated at 200,000 to replace the roof. I talked to a contractor who does public work and just finished up the Bridgewater Town Hall, 150-year-old town hall, very similar to ours, for $900 a square. At our 103 squares, that would be a budget number of about 100 grand for the roof. In the town's estimate, the last estimate I saw was $285,000. So we still think, even if it is the town's estimate and not our contractor's public work estimate, it still fits within the budget. The next item is sprinklers. So we have a sprinkler budget in our EBI report of 133,000. We think since it's six years old now, we would escalate that to 200 grand. At 15 bucks a square foot, which was the biggest number for commercial, in commercial sprinklers in the means cost estimating, that would be 212,000. In this case, the town's estimate was $1 million. So this, again, I think there's still some room to get the job done for under $1 million. And the next work item is HBAC. We know the chillers need to be replaced and we know there's other work to do. A mechanical engineer said the chiller replacement, straight out of means, is 50 grand, plus another 50 grand to install. So that would be $100,000 for just the chiller replacement. But we know there's other HBAC work to do. But with what's left over from the previous two items, we think we can get a lot of the HBAC wrapped up and functional for the town. And then finally, leveling the walkway, we budgeted at $12,000 to that. And we feel confident that that work could be done for the fairly simple job to take the bricks up, put down the tuminous coating and put the bricks back. So we think that the $1 million budget for first phase, we realize we're going to have to be very careful, hire engineers and do a good job for the town and then go to the next town meeting for the next phase of product.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Longley and Mr. Brewer, we're going to move along.
I just wanted to add that we think that this could be a really great project for the select board and for our town, and we hope that you will give it serious consideration.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Inon?
Evening, thank you for having us here. I must say, I get very excited about seeing a full room in a public meeting. It's heartening to see people show up, so I appreciate everyone being here. Our... Okay, thanks, Kevin. The plan that I am sharing with you today is on behalf of a steering committee for a reimagined town hall wherein we see the historic town hall building being transformed into a community cultural center should the business of the town hall be moved to One Pleasant Street. Slides. The steering committee is currently comprised of a number of nonprofits around town, the Quasim dramatic club, Quasim historical society, Friends of the Quasim Library, the Social Arts Center, all of whom are represented here at this table. We have been meeting this year out of a shared interest in making sure that the historic town hall is preserved and is able to be brought back to its glory as we have saw on the first slide. And as a member of the historical society, I just love preserving historical building. Our vision, surely that the town hall moved to One Pleasant. Our vision for 41 Highland Ave is to renovate it and revive historical town hall. We want to retain historic preservation and community use of the building. Of course, the business of town hall would be elsewhere, but we firmly believe that town Cohasset and surrounding towns should feel welcome and have ways to access that building on a daily basis. We want to restore the building with architectural integrity. There are some of us on the steering committee, Lisa Pratt, for example, who has spent so many hours in the building and is just so familiar with what needs to be done. And we want to help move it in a direction that is brought back to original meaning. We want to engage the community in this process. We want to invite in input to inform the process as we go through the development process, as we look at programming, as we look at naming. Of course, the town hall, if the business is elsewhere, cannot be called the town hall, but we want to have a name that brings with community spirit and keeps the celebration of this historical meeting place on the common. And as we explore this, we want to explore the ownership model of the building as these nonprofits kind of guide the idea. Our real purpose is to retain the use of the building as the heart of the town. It is truly a place to gather. I think when I used to teach fifth grade social studies, we would map out the New England common and what it looks like. And there was no required town hall, but there was a meeting place for people to come and gather, whether it be at, you know, an arts festival or a farmer's market or to do whatever. There is this place to go and to invite people in. Our town hall currently has been used by the Quasim dramatic club since at least 1921 and continues to be. And we would love to see plays back in the town hall when it is safe. I know I would love to have my children ride their bikes to do a play instead of have to commute to Situit to engage in cultural efforts activities, even though Situit's great, but let's keep it in Cohasset. We would also love to introduce and expand the community use of the common year round, thinking about having farmers markets in the main hall, being able to look at the calendar of events and celebrations that we need in our community and invite them into a venue at home. To have the opportunity to have, you know, the high school hall of fame celebration banquet at the town hall in Cohasset would be amazing, be able to have the scouts' court of awards there would be incredible. To be able to have senior week events there for our CHS students would be wonderful as a venue in our town. We have a vision of arts and educational programming in all creative disciplines, using, you know, big spaces, small spaces, having instrument lessons, sewing costumes, doing plays, doing art. I think that, you know, combined brilliance of many of the people at this table who have experience in those areas already could just so naturally lend itself to developing the use of that space in all sorts of disciplines. We also see it as an event space for families, students, and community achievements. I think this is the part that's most exciting to me as a person who currently has four generations of my own family in Cohasset, to be able to have my kids be in a play and then see them walk the CHS red carpet, go to a banquet for them, and then maybe host a rehearsal dinner there for a wedding. How cool to do all that in the same building right in our town. Our working group, next slide please, is comprised of, like I said, a few nonprofits from around town who are actively involved in the steering committee, the dramatic club, the historical society, the arts center. Just to the next slide, Kevin, thank you. Thanks, buddy. All right, community groups expressing interest at this time. We had an initial meeting and we had a great show from the community. I feel like it is not often that I get to be in a room of so many people who are in favor of the same idea and having that be about the arts and celebrating it and making more of it. The Atlantic Symphony Orchestra was represented, the Quasim Lakekeeper's Corporation, Quasim Skating, Friends of the Library, Rusty Skippers, Social Service League, the Community Center, Social Playhouse Associates. All of these organizations came, answered the call and said, yes, we agree with this idea. We want to see this building live on and be a place of cultural relevance and arts and creativity in our community. Our experience as a steering committee is vast and relevant to the development of this project. As you can see, people represent experience in program development, fundraising, marketing, public relations, events management, facilities management, historical preservation, law, finance. We are all at the heart of this, strongly invested in the community. We have a deep-seated passion to maintain the historic preservation of the town common. We want more than anything for this building to stay standing and be beautiful and be used. And we want to steward this singular community space for the next generation, to make sure it lives on and doesn't just stand there as kind of a symbol of what was, but what we have been and what we continue to be as a town. Also, several of the people involved in this committee have experience with developing similar projects and creating successful models for cultural centers, fundraising, capital campaigns in order to have this come to fruition in other towns. There are models for this as well. This is not just an idea that we've decided would be cute. There are many successful Um, there are many successful models. Um, Katie Holden has been doing amazing research and contacting other towns and other um municipalities to talk about their process. We have the Chelmsford Center for the Arts, Randall Stetson Fall, um, Teacan, the Center for the Arts in Natick, Zoomix, which used to be a fire station, so similar, not a town hall, but a similar concept. And then these other towns have um very similar projects in various um steps of their their, you know, summer on capital campaigns, summer in planning at this point, but this is something that's being done throughout the Commonwealth, and we feel like it could be done here as well. The funding for this project, um, we see as being done through a community capital campaign, um, which of course would include individual individual donors, private foundations, and then also there's a vast network of government funding and um grants that um both Lisa and Patrice have had great experience with in their own lines of work outside of this project. Um, the campaign will include um fundraising for for design and development. Also will include money for a maintenance fund and innovation fund, so that we can develop programming, which will then sustain the um cultural center as it goes on, and to ensure long-term sustainability, we'll have capital reserves because we want to not only renovate and reimagine this building, but also maintain it and sustain programming well into the future. Um, the cultural center will have, I was saying, a sustainable program model. Uh, second slide, please. That's great. Thanks. Oh, thanks. Okay, sorry. That's fine. Thank you. Um, our our vision is that we will yeah, have a sustainable program model, with significant percentages of revenues earned through programming, event rentals, and leasing as a part of that renovation. Um, we envision similar to what's been proposed in in past days of the town hall, making sure there's a catering kitchen, making sure the hall is usable for multiple purposes, um, so that we could rent out that space um for events and for leasing. This will offset the need for contributed income and ensure that the center remains a cultural resource for Cohasset in addition to a cultural and community asset. Um, as I mentioned before, that programming would be multidisciplinary. We just have this vision of kind of a starting point and then it growing into just this multifaceted place in which lessons are given, things are created, just this extension of so many things that are already great about our community, but then housing them in one space. Um, like we talked about these rentals for different community events um and also use by different community organizations in order to celebrate their milestones throughout the year. Um, we also see there being a membership, you know, I think as a mom, there's nothing more exciting to me than having a discounted member price when I'm signing my kids up for activities. So I think that could be part of our sustainability um and also help to to get a group of followers who are really committed to being a part of the cultural center um on the common. Um, what's next? This working group will be setting concrete programming goals. We will create opportunities for community input. We will explore funding and ownership models. We will identify a timeline as the town decision for the town hall comes to light. I just want to end by saying that should the business of the town move to One Pleasant Street, we want to ensure that the heart of the town will remain on the common in a historic town hall, reimagined as a community cultural center. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Thank you. Um, thank you to both of our presenters uh for some great information and for staying on time as well. It's seven forty-two. Um, just to help me moderate the conversation, who here has a question or a comment? Could I just see a show of hands? One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay. Um, because we have a limited amount of people who want to say or ask something, um, I would ask folks to confine their sort of back and forth to five minutes, just so everyone can have a chance. So I'll start with you, Ms. Kennedy. Do you want to begin with your comment?
Hi, Diane Kennedy. I'm on the advisory board. Don't pick me up. But I just have a couple of questions on the eight point four million dollars for the renovation of um Forty-One Highland. What within that number includes, what would what would happen with Old Town Hall in that scenario? Certainly not the ten point seven restoration, but it, so does that eight point four can does that eight point four include some work to the um Old Town Hall?
So Michelle weigh in here, but um, yeah.
It it doesn't, it doesn't restore the entire auditory of that to um the community space that we're looking for, uh but it does address some like painting, um, but it doesn't address the chorus, the stage, um, or any of the other.
Great. Um, it it's okay. I just have a couple of other questions of the other ideas. Just on the um the citizens' petition, I just want to understand a little bit about um one second, um, where you got your renovation numbers, uh because they are pretty modest of a million dollars a year, knowing the kind of work that is needed over at Forty-One Highland. And then also, if we were to move the town hall offices to One Pleasant, wouldn't we still be able to use the parking spaces? And I just don't know that the parking space is as much of a concern should we move operations to One Pleasant because we could, we still own the parking lot at Forty-One Highland. So just sort of an understanding of the numbers that for a million dollars a year, and then also the parking space.
Yeah, well, I used a variety of resources to drill down on the numbers. One was RS means cost estimating. The other was talking to my engineers that I do work with that do public work all the time to get ballpark numbers. And then talking to general contractors who can give me some guidance on similar projects that they had done and what the costs were. Now, uh trying to get a lot of work done for a million dollars to get town hall functional again isn't going to be easy. Public bid laws, as Michelle indicated, they're complicated. But we, having done a number of municipal and public work projects, we think that the the three million dollar, three-phase project is, it's a minimal approach, but I think it'll make town hall really done great again for at least another twenty years. In terms of the parking, yeah, people, uh town employees can park at the lot uh where town hall is now and walk over to One Pleasant Street, and that would eliminate some of the parking problems or potential impact on the businesses in in the village that we think um if everybody were to park uh right right there in the town municipal lot or the MBTA lot. Because onsite parking, there isn't enough for the town employees and the residents.
Thank you. And one last question on the on cultural center idea. Um, is is that something that you would pursue even if we decided to keep town hall operations? I I think I can see sort of a marriage of some of these ideas as being optimal, at least in my mind. And then also, I just want to point out two places that I think you should um reach out to. One is the Umbrella Arts in Concord, which took an old school. I was just there this past weekend, and it's really pretty special. And also talk to the Hingham Community Center, which is right up the street, because they took an old historic building that's privately owned. But um the idea is that the program generation, the program money would generate enough income to maintain the building, and it's not as easy, obviously, as it might otherwise be. So, thank you.
And and Diane, to your question about parking, just so everyone knows the full facts, um just to remind everyone, the MBTA does own a parking lot next to One Pleasant Street that the town can use its its public parking. Um, not a lot of folks park in there. There's about thirty spaces on top of the existing thirty. Um, so who was next? I'm trying, well, Mr. Kennedy. You, no? Okay, all right. Corey, sorry, I remembered you had a question.
Hey, thanks very much, Corey Evans, three one three North Main Street. Um, just a couple things I noticed during the discussion about the citizens' petition when it came to the OPM. Michelle somewhat referenced it when she began, but if we don't have an OPM for this, it was it was presented that there'd be a cost savings. It's not necessarily true because someone has to manage this project, whatever it is. I don't think any of us wants to spend millions of dollars and have no management of it. So that would come from town staff, and town staff is paid with our money. So the cost isn't saved, it's just transferred to somewhere else, and then potentially town hall staff are doing something else. So if you look at the OPM costs, certainly there's potential for some savings, but we shouldn't write that off. It's like, oh, we can take that off because that's just going to be a cost that gets transferred. The other thing with the bidding, and I appreciate all the work that the petitions have done when it comes to trying to get good numbers. But my question's always been, what happens when they're wrong? What happens when bids come up too high? Are they going to be responsible for it? No. The only thing that matters in the cost of these projects is what the bids come back in. We can sit in this room and all agree, we're only going to spend a million dollars. But if the bids come in for the roof at one point one, that's what they are. We have no, there's nothing we can do about that. So I just want us to be clear that when we're talking about these estimates, it's not a town versus petitioners estimate. That's not what it is. We're not choosing to spend more money for no reason. We're just choosing to go down a different path, and the cost is going to be what it is. But I think we all have to be honest in this room that the costs are going to be higher than what we estimate because every project we've ever done for the last thirty years in this town has come in over budget. It just does. And if we're committed to getting through the building, I think that's great. But I think we need to be committed to getting through the process, not be committed to a number that is aspirational more than bid trip. The bids are going to be the only thing that's important here. Um, and then finally, for, I love the community center, the question I have is I'm expecting to need some seed money in the front. Have you talked about how you get, we're talking about spending eight million dollars here. Even if you guys do it on your own, you're probably looking at a lot of zeros. Where have you gotten with that kind of thought?
We are at a, sorry. We are in a very preliminary um phase. We've only met twice as a steering committee, but um I think Lydia put forth a very strong we did have strong discussion on what a capital campaign would look like, and I have personally a lot of experience, as does Lisa Pratt um and several others, but on on developing a capital campaign. And we were very thoughtful in that it wouldn't just be capital, it'd be comprehensive, so that it would include capital reserves, it would include an innovation fund. Of course, there is seed funding. I do have people who I know would commit money right from the gate. Um, but I would be looking at individuals because that would be the first investors. There are probably not going to be grants. They're gonna, you know, it, there's so many, it's too early to know who the seed supporters will be, but yes, there would have to be a seed support. And it's actually a little discomfort, there's a little uncomfort discomfort in speaking about this because anyone who's done a capital campaign knows you don't ever talk about it until you've raised fifty percent of the money, which we haven't done. We haven't raised any money, but we're talking about it.
Can you please raise your hand if you'd a question or a comment?
Do I get a chance to respond to his comment?
Um, I think it was a comment designed for the room. Um, it, I'm gonna go around and then we'll get the. Oh, Miss, excuse me, sir. Excuse me. We're gonna go in the order when people raise their hand. If you could, please present it to this gentleman. Then we'll move to the table.
Thank you. I'm John Chapman. My question is about the foundation repairs that Michelle referenced in the first proposal. Um, raise Michelle. If you, sort of part A is if you could just elaborate on that and why it's important that it was in the first option you gave, but not in the other town hall option. And then for the citizens' groups or the corollary question, which is, did you consider that element and why it's not in your option? And what the consequences of that would be?
Sure. So the reason it is in our option for historic town hall is we are proposing taking down the annex. And if we take down the annex, we have to underpin the historic town hall so it's structurally sound. So it's because we're removing part of the building.
So it's only, so it's structurally sound as it is?
Correct. If we remove the annex, now we have to do some underpinning.
It's the Siamese twin.
And they don't propose to remove the annex?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Brewer, Mr. Brewer.
Oh, yeah, I have a question.
It, yeah, I think he understands.
Exactly, exactly.
Uh, listen, it's excuse me, excuse me, we are going around. We are going around. We are doing public comment right now in the order in which people are raising their hand. I want to make sure everyone has a chance to make comments, including you, Mr. Kennedy, which I afforded you in the beginning. What I want to do, though, is make sure that after this gentleman has his question answered, instead of having a back and forth, that we're gonna have everyone have a chance to make a comment, including those who haven't spoken yet. So are there other folks, Mr. Dominsir? I saw your hand raised. Would you like to make a comment?
Microphone? Thank you. I think for everyone here, the real question is, as much as it is for our petition, which is the one million dollar petition, I think is what is the select board going to recommend for town? But their warrant article, and is it just the three point two plus whatever adders associated with it? Or is it the three point two plus either the eight point five or the ten point five? In other words, you can't just say it's three point two and not deal, as we have talked about in the past. You can't deal with this issue without dealing with what you do with Forty-One Highland Ave. So my question to you or to whoever is going to answer for you is what are you putting on the warrant, number one? Number two, how are you going to pay for it? Number three, if it includes something on Forty-One Highland Ave, is that an override that you're talking about? And you can ask us the same question about ours. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Longley, you were next in line. If you want to respond.
Uh, yes, I just want to uh read again what I said in my talk was that each phase is targeted by cost, not by scope. The limit is one million dollars per year for each of three years. When we run out of money, we'll stop. If we can't complete all the items in the, within the yearly one mark, uh million dollar target that we're telling the town is the is the, what we're asking people to commit to, uh then we'll stop. Some items will be deferred. We we identified in year two, for example, ten items. If we can only afford nine of them for the for the million, we won't do item number ten. So we will keep with this plan within the million dollars that we tell the town that we're asking them as owners, as taxpayers, to pay.
Um, why don't you hand it to Mr. Brewer?
Oh, yeah. Uh, just to answer John Chapman's question about the foundations, Michelle identified that if you were to remove the annex, you've got to underpin and do a bunch of concrete um work uh to stabilize that. So what's what's funny is the annex, it it's not beautiful. We could make it beautiful by putting mutton windows in, that kind of thing. But it's, it's, it, it, the historic side is dependent on it for stairs, elevators, uh electrical, and and um it it, and the foundation. Um, but in terms of uh the EBI report indicated that the historic foundation um had some um joints that were leaking that that they, you know, been degraded over time. Generally, if, as an architect, whenever they excavate a stone foundation, all the mortar's gone. That, that, um, but there are pressure injection systems that can be done reasonably and cost effectively. We put it in phase three. Um, uh, while we don't anticipate that the project would involve very much uh finished space, other than the dramatic uh club's changing rooms being redone, that it would stay as storage, non-habitable space typically on the historic side. But there is a way to waterproof that foundation at a reasonable cost, but it is an impressive job, and it's number six on phase three.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brewer.
Bring it over to.
Yep.
Patrick Kennedy, Fifty-Nine Jerusalem Road Drive. My first comment is about
Patrick Kennedy, fifty nine Jerusalem Road Drive. My first comment is about public comment. Ever since we had a proposal to move the town hall to Pleasant Street, ninety percent or more of the meetings that have been conducted by the Board of Selectment have been in um executive closed session without any public comment, without any notice to the public that that would be considered, debated, and pretty much decided by the Board of Selectment, or Select Board as we call it now. Even when the townspeople rejected the financing proposal for One Pleasant Street, the first thing the Select Board did was come back and decide to move town hall to One Pleasant Street without including public comment, without listening to the town vote, rejecting the will of the town, which said, don't finance the move of town hall from where it exists on the historic town common to One Pleasant. That was the voice of the people. You didn't listen. And not only did you didn't, didn't listen, you then immediately went back into executive session to decide to move the town hall back to One Pleasant. And even when you did that in private, without taking public comment, even that lease proposal got rejected by the developer. Now you come back again. You're not listening to the public. That's my first comment about public comment. Secondly, the citizens petitioners come up with a great proposal to keep what's been in existence for hundreds of years, which is the town hall, the seat of the town on the town common. How many people here would prefer to see all the functionality of town hall remain on the town common? I for one would. That's the voice of the people. Listen to the public that is here. You got a good turnout here, but what I suspect is that what we will get is another closed door session, another, another executive session of the board deciding to present a proposal to town meeting that doesn't reflect what the people want. And one of the reasons is because we have three or four board members who are neighbors of One Pleasant Street. We've got a director butter who hasn't recused himself from the whole process, who abus One Pleasant Street, hasn't disclosed it, hasn't talked about it in public. That's a fact. So I would like to see that discussed. And the reason why that select board never hasn't recused himself from any vote on moving the town hall to One Pleasant. That's my comments for tonight. Who's next?
Mr. Hillman, please.
Rob Hillman, twenty one Norfolk Road. Um, I was the primary proponent of the uh, moved upon uh to Pleasant Street at town meeting. Um, and at town meeting, which is the organic legislative body of the town, two thirds of voters there are voting for it. That is a resounding town endorsement for that move. Because Prop two and a half, Prop one and a half, there is required to have a ballot vote afterward. And by which in a less than two percent margin, the town rejected the financing. But our primary and two hundred and something near two hundred and fifty-three year old method of governing endorsed Pleasant Street. The town, because of nineteen seventy-eight statute, didn't endorse, pay for it that way, won't override. That's thing one. Thing two to the proponents, I've heard this is a one-year project or a series of one-year projects, but from time to time, what slips is it's a three-year project for three million dollars, but we're going to phase it. And my question, I guess, would be, has anyone obtained a legal opinion from somebody schooled in the dark arts of public bidding law, which I am not, but I know it when I see it? Uh, that, that would be permitted at all, or whether that would die a horrible death at the Attorney General's office? Because what you're doing is you're unpacking, you're saying it out loud. We've now made sort of admissions on the public record that we had as a three million dollar project that you're going to break up to avoid the restrictions of the law. And I don't think that this should be something that the town should pay for through its town council to get opinion for a citizens group. They should come to town meeting with a competent um opinion that this is permissible. I'm not saying it's not. It's not what I do. It's not what I'm insured to give opinions on, so I don't expressly. But uh, but I think it's a critically important question. I'm good. Anybody? Björn, next.
Hi, I'm Heather Jordy. Never done this before. Um, first, just, I, I know you giving, giving comment, but can people answer their questions? Surely, can you answer that question? Could you?
May I permit?
We, a part of the issue is we need to have the mic so people, sorry, it's hard to have back and forth across the room. Why I'm trying to sort of go along.
The three million dollar project is conducting maintenance that has not happened in the last ten years. Now, you can say, well, that's a project, but it's actually, uh, we're seven years past the life of the, of that thirty set, that thirty year roof that's on there. Parts of the roof are laying on the ground. If, 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 uh, if the town had approved proper maintenance of the systems and the assemblies that we have within that building, we would not be having to call it a project. It is simply making up for deferred maintenance that should have happened and was not appropriated.
Just to follow up on Pete's.
Hold, hold on a second. Call Clark.
Generals.
Clark, Clark, please use the microphone.
Oh, you guys can't hear me?
Well, no, the, the people, the people online.
Okay, I thought I needed, had it to project. No, I, uh, Rob, I'm glad you asked that question because I have been re-reviewing the Inspector General's guidelines for uh, public building, uh, public buildings and contracting. I haven't found in the guidelines that a phased project is impossible to do. But it may take uh getting um some additional feedback from the Inspector General's office. Thanks for asking.
I just want to make sure, are you open? Oh, okay. And then we'll get to you, Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you.
Stay here.
First, I want to say thank you, everybody, for your presentations tonight and for our, our work. I know it's hard. My questions are, um, one, who actually owns the building on Pleasant Street? And it was an LLC, but like, who is the underlying owner? And two, given I work for a regulatory agency, my whole company has gone remote during COVID. I believe the whole town hall was remote for an extended period of time. Was that a consideration during these changes? I think we all really love the town hall. We all love to see it just brought back and the building brought back and the town hall staying in the town hall. So was that a consideration to just, instead of moving to Pleasant Street, just focus some energy and some resources to a remote environment while we can do the construction?
So I think the Select Board has some answers to some of this um in terms of the remote environment that has, it is something that we have been talking about, and we have certainly looked at that, including with respect to if we downsized, I D went to One Pleasant Street, how would that work? Um, and that is a part of the calculus, when moving to a smaller space, if that is in fact an option. Um, and then I'm looking at the Patriot Properties card for Cohasset, the test, the assessment card. And the owner is One Pleasant Street Cohasset LLC, which, I mean, that's the legal owner for One Pleasant Street. Um. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Who's the manager?
Yeah, uh, Michelle, can you remind me of the names of?
Based, based on it, um, Paul Cagiano is the managing partner.
Okay. Ms. Jenkins?
Thank you, Leonard Jenkins, Jerusalem Road. Uh, in response to Mr. Hillman, uh, don't forget, at the spring twenty nineteen town meeting, there was an article that had twenty-six items in it. One of the items was to replace the roof on the town hall. That was in the original art, uh, morning. When we came to town meeting, town managers' uh motions had this item is removed. So this was deferred maintenance on purpose. Goodness only knows why. But another thing, we are going to be looking at a totally different aspect when we go to town meeting about One Pleasant Street. This is now an HOA. We are going to become part of an HOA. What is that going to entail? How this is worked between a municipal building and private homeowners? We don't know. Who's going to be able to tell us that information? Then we get down to the parking situation. Besides the parking situation, we have the handicap parking. What about the spaces for the car chargers? Who's going to be in charge of that? Where are we going to have the, are we going to have to have all of our electric vehicles from the town come over to the old town parking lot? Or is that parking lot still going to be the same once we take down the annex if this is what is decided? These are a lot of questions that should be addressed before we get to our town meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Um, on the Select Board, I think I'll give folks an opportunity to answer whatever questions they want. But I want to take a few more comments or quest, questions from the audience. Okay, wait, come on up. Actually, if you could just stand up here, that'll make it easier to pass it off to the next person.
Let me take the front stage here. Thank you, Whitney Haller in eighteen Rustic Drive. So this thing, uh, it was an apartment building. It was supposed to be affordable housing. It's at One Pleasant Street. Now I'm hearing it's going to be a condo now that, uh, dare I start any rumors? But is there talk of like some financial concerns here with this owner there that I've? That's my question. I'd like to hear a lot more about this owner. I'd like to hear a lot more about buying a condo for our, for our, my town office. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. You could give it to Cory, then Mr. Stasko.
All right, Mr. Longley. So I think one thing that occurred to me is that part of, and I, I talked to one of your colleagues on this. By setting a million dollars, it almost creates distraction. We're not talking about the million dollars and you're talking to me about phasing. Wouldn't it make more sense to say, yeah, we're going to phase it? And we're going to target a million dollars, willing to, and we're going to bid and say, hey, the petition says we're going to do the roofs and then this, we're going to bid it, we're going to come to town meeting for the funding. And then we're going to figure out what the next thing is. Because maybe we only have to four hundred thousand dollars, but we don't want to say, well, if we do these two things together, they're one point five. If you do them separately, they're going to be two or three. So would it make more sense to let the process determine what the cost is? And then we can decide if we want to spend it at that time, rather than adding, that's, that's my hangup here.
Yeah?
Sure. And then Mr. Stasko, and then Mr. Kennedy.
I think that's exactly the spirit that we had. Exactly. If, if, if it wound up being a little bit more than a million, if the voters would support it, or if the budgetary process would support it, we should do it. We need to maintain our town hall. Just like you had to take care of your house, I had to take care of my house. When I ran out of money, I stopped doing projects at my house. I don't take out home equity loans. So anyway, um, that's the exact spirit. And, you know, I don't want to open a can of worms, but if it took longer than three years, as a, as a, if I'm still living here and I'm still paying taxes, I would support a fourth year. I would, because it's my town hall. I'm proud of my town. It's a wonderful place. And, and I want to take care of it. In fact, since I own it, I have to take care of it.
Um, can you give it to Mr. Stasko? Mr. Brewer, just to make sure, Mr. Stasko.
Unfortunately, with public bid laws, you, you, you really need to have the budget, Michelle can back it. You need to have the money confirmed at town meeting before you go out to bid. Because the problem is, all the contractors know whether, whether the funding's passed at town meeting or not. They're not going to bid on an unfunded project. So we have to say, we'll stick with the million dollars. That's, that's it. And we'll bump up against it and um, because, because we want to get competitive bids. Contractors are going to give competitive bids if they know the money's there.
Mr. Stasko, next, please.
Hi, Ryan Stasko, four Gay Jerusalem Road. Uh, one question I had is that if the town hall did move to One Pleasant, where is the archive vault going to go?
Okay, thank you. Um, we're going to save all the questions for the Select Board until we make sure everyone has a chance to talk.
Mark Cameron, eighteen Virginia Land, a member of the advisory committee and also a member of the two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-three Town Hall Building Committee. A couple of questions for uh, the, the one million dollar program. We had a bid for uh fire suppression, which also included a required fire alarm system to support that fire suppression at about one point five million dollars. So it's not something you can break out over multiple years. Uh, I also didn't hear about that plan addressing the accessibility. I know you've mentioned uh leveling the walkway out front, but didn't hear anything about uh, the accessibility into the building in the front, which has been a concern. And during COVID, we added a lovely metal ramp uh out front, which is very fond on the town common. Uh, I didn't hear that being addressed. Uh, you said other systems. I didn't know if that included full electrical upgrade. There's many old electrical panels, fuses, outdated equipment in that basement that needs serious upgrading. Uh, I just don't see one million dollars a year getting us anywhere in three years. I see this one million dollars a year continuing on in a, in a year ten. We're going to say, are we done yet? And the answer is going to be, no, we're not done yet. Because every other proposal here, everything else is far greater different than three million dollars. And if we're going to sell a three million dollar option, we're delusional. It's not three million. And every year we go past where we are, it's going to be, we're going to get less product for, for the same amount of money. So spreading this out over time is going to be an extreme disruption in town hall. I mean, it, it just, imagine being in that building and having to work in that building when they're, when they're replacing the roof. Granted, that's probably a couple of weeks, but you're going to have to leak. And if this kind of activity is going on and off for years, there is a significant disruption. Um, I also didn't hear about any of the structural repairs that need to be, happen to the trusses in the, uh, in the attic of Old Town Hall, or the floor strengthening that needs to happen on the auditorium. These are all things that are in that EBI report. These are all things that are there. But we can't just go for the paint and the, and the, and the mechanical system that we know. I mean, that, that mechanical system from a design perspective is completely outdated. That needs to not be replaced by in-kind units. That needs to be, that whole system needs to be engineered and designed new. We have air conditioning units that stick through the side of the building, that drip condensate onto the side of the building and ruin the side. So this, I support and applaud that effort to define a more economical approach. I just think that it needs a lot more money than a million dollars a year. And if that means, look at a ten to fifteen million dollar option, target this for ten million, have a couple of million dollars in contingency, this, that is a better way to approach this than to say, we're going to do a million dollars. That seems like death by a thousand paper plates. So, and I, and I certainly applaud this group here in making it a cultural center. I spoke to the people that use, that do the one four three exchange, and they, and they would love to use this space. But they feel that it's challenging to, they have a, they have a, a, a real estate problem. They need a place to, to do the one four three exchange, which is a free thing, a free item that benefits all of us here in the community. And for these people that have to jump through the hurdles that they need to and come in front of the Select Board, no disrespect to anybody on the Select Board, but the fact that they have to come in front of the Select Board to request that space and then be charged for that space i- is not very much, you know, in spirit of the community. Um, so again, I would encourage you to find a realistic option. Um, I, I don't, I'm not in favor of the, of the One Pleasant and the effort that where our real problem is forty one Highland Ave. We need to solve forty one Highland Ave. We need to figure out what we're going to do with forty one Highland Ave. If we stay there, great. If it's another entity that comes in there, great. But until we have that answer, we shouldn't be looking at other real estate. We don't have a real estate prob, we don't have a real estate square footage problem. We have a, we have a problem is that we don't take care and invest in our real estate. So acquiring more real estate is going to only hogtie us in the future and create an additional problem for us in the future when we don't take care of what we have. We all, for, for people that are paying attention, the heat in this building has failed. There's a heat issue in this building that needs to be replaced. There's substantial efforts that need to be made and investments that need to be made in our buildings. And we've got to figure out forty one Highland Ave before we figure out what else to buy.
Just quickly respond to the
Well, we have.
I'm not picking.
Why don't we give it to this one up? All right. And then Clark, and then we'll go to Mike, and then I thought I saw someone in the back.
Carol Best in five fifty-five. I have a question and might seem a stupid question, but why is there not a maintenance fund that we can use to do repairs on buildings? There should always be a maintenance fund. Why isn't there one in the budget for this? And why has it never been there from what I can understand? That's why we're in the position we are, because nobody thinks about paying for doing what needs to happen.
Thank you. We, we set up a slash fund for the schools at the full town meeting. Maybe we could do something similar for, uh, the remainder of our building, but, um, uh, where's the fellow who, who asked the question about the sprinklers? Mark? Yeah, uh, good questions. I mean, really, you're actually thinking about this a lot deeper than what I'm used to with this, with this town hall problem and issue. Um, in terms of the sprinklers, the 1.5 million was a shock to me, really was. And all, all the numbers that I'm getting from the, the contractors and my mechanical engineers say it's maybe 250, not a million dollars in sprinklers. But I did ask my engineer specifically about if you were to remove the entire fire alarm system on the historic side, what would it cost to design and install a brand new, a brand new fire alarm system on that historic side? And he's like 220. It's not close to 1.5.
Okay, thank you, Clark. Um, Mr. Dick, can you give it to him?
Let me bring this over to you.
Thank you.
Well, meetings.
Good evening. Uh, first, thank you for getting this forum going. Secondly, um, I wholeheartedly support the cultural center idea. I certainly hope we can pull that one off. Um, I want to point out in my mind, the root cause of why we're all here tonight. Last fall, um, the town did not approve funding for moving to One Pleasant Street. And some of us were dismayed that 41 Highland Avenue was not addressed at all as an option of taking care of it. So I had discussions with my colleague on capital budget, Ralph Dormitzer. On, he introduced me to Peter and, and Clark I already knew and heard some of their ideas. I should, um, you know, point out, I am a member of capital budget. Um, but I am trying to be, you know, even handed by all of us. Bottom line is this. I think we've, those of us here in the room, I think, feel that they've heard a pretty good option for keeping 41 Highland Avenue as our seat of government on the town common where it's been actually since seventeen seventeen, according to Jackie Dormitzer. I don't think we should walk away from 41 Highland Avenue even now. I think we can save it. What I would hope is that the select board at this point would engage with those, the cultural, um, uh, resource. I'm, I'm losing your, your, your phrase, but community cultural center as well as the folks with a citizen's petition and do a reset. Do a reset. We, I feel, and I could be wrong, I feel we can get together, look at all these options, now that we've got them in front of us. Look at these options and try and come to a meeting of the minds. Yes, there is doubt on are we looking at a one million dollar per year for three or four or five years? Or not? I can say this, Mark, that in speaking with Peter and with Clark, they actually covered some of those concerns that you, you itemized. They just haven't had a chance to respond to you. But I can just assure you that they have thought about it and it, it will take people talking to each other and comparing notes and saying, is this real? Or is this dreamland? But from where I sat, I find that these are two very thoughtful and honest people who are really trying to bring their many years of experience to bear on keeping us at 41 Highland Avenue. So in conclusion, I hope that we can actually now level set, reset and find a way forward now that we do have an option to keep 41 Highland. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Before I turn to the select board for any comments or responses, is there anyone else? I think I saw someone farther back. Oh, Rob.
Couple of things. Uh, nothing pains me more than disagreeing with my colleague, Mark. Nothing. Well, a couple of things, but uh, the problem with the whole One Pleasant issue was timing. We were sitting, trying to sort town finances, um, and looking at options for town hall operations. And, uh, One Pleasant basically walked in the door. That was an unexpected surprise, perhaps. It did not lend itself to enough time to address 41 when we went to town meeting last time. Town meeting still approved it. Voters didn't finance it, but town meeting did approve it. Um, and that's still the problem. I, your analytics are exactly right. Sit back, look at everything, try and come up with a better solution, but time is not on our side. It's One Pleasant is going to go and be something else uh, unless it gets done. So it just forces the question. That's not an advocacy point, one way or the other. That just is how it's going to be. So regrettable, not time to do all of that, I don't think. But, um, that's that part. The cultural center part and how 41 works is there are a ton of models. A lot of towns in Massachusetts have moved out of their old town hall. Um, Hingham has. Um, Randolph has, dozens of them have. And many of them, perhaps most of them, rehabbed that building into something else that works for the community. Um, government continues, the building continues. They just happen to do so in different places. And there are models out there and this group that is coming together is very capable of finding a way to build this with other people's money. Other people who have money were willing to give you that money in order to do, in order to do this kind of thing. And if somebody can't raise serious dollars in a capital campaign in Tannico Hasset, they can't run a capital campaign. Come on, you know, this shouldn't be that hard. So the, uh, you know, so, and, but with some of these models, it requires a certain amount of patience. We have a group who wants to spend a million dollars a year. You know, death by 10,000 paper cuts perhaps, but that's because you're trying to have functional government in it. If you're rehabbing that thing into a, uh, into a cultural center, you can afford the time for the money to come in to phase the, the work, et cetera, and to come up with a structure uh, that can do that. Um, you get town government in the town as opposed to out on the highway. You get, uh, the good part of the building maintained. It still is a place. I am not personally emotional about where I go to pay my parking tickets. I'm emotional about the parking tickets. I'm not emotional about the, the forum in which they have to be paid. But I don't want to waste your time. Uh, I just think that those are important points. The, the problem with One Pleasant is timing and the, the opportunity to turn, uh, 41 into something that is permanent public asset is, uh, it'd be a shame if I'm like.
Looking at the faces and the hands. So, um, oh, Mark. Yep, one, okay. You get the last word.
One last comment in regards of the phasing over years. You know, I, I do do this for a living. Uh, I work for construction management firm in Boston and been doing this for over 20 years. Uh, anytime I see these phased approaches, there's often a lot of rework. Uh, logistically, you can't do something without moving something out of the way. And if you're going to be doing this over, over years, there's going to be a lot of rework that's inevitably going to happen, whether you like it or not. Uh, and that translates to wasted money. You know, and again, maybe, you know, we all live in Cohasset in this room. We can all sit here and talk about RS mean and, and, and the, and the values that we're seeing. But you know what? The reality is we live in Cohasset. We know when we call a contractor for price in Cohasset and they, or we sit, they say, where do you live? The last thing you want to tell them is Cohasset, because the prices are automatically higher here. They know we, they, they feel that we have it. It's an inconvenient place for contractors to get to. So it comes at a price. And on that 20, on that, on that town hall project that we presented in two thousand twenty-three, we felt it. We felt it from the bidders. Every single one of them, they didn't want to come to Cohasset. It is not a desirable place for commercial contractors of this nature to come. And so it's harder for us to get bids. It's harder for us to get competitive bids. So we don't fall in the middle of that metric. We are a taxpayer. So it is important for us to realize that and there's nothing we can do about that. We just have to acknowledge that and understand that.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to turn to my colleagues. Uh, we've had questions and some comments and I want to see if anyone wanted to provide any responses, including about some of what they've been thinking about, uh, with respect to this forum.
I guess if I go first, I can end first. I think you all see the type of things that we as a select board have been grappling and a lot of different opinions amongst the select, because this is very, very difficult. Every time something comes forward, there are a lot of articulate people who come up with very good reasons why it doesn't work. They don't want to spend the money. There's other things that are cheaper and they're all well reasoned. If you want kind of the mark of what's the best way to do it, Mark over there, if you listened to the way he spoke, it's clear. He knows what he's talking about. And if you want a true town hall on the town common that's going to function, do everything that we want, you're going to have to pay for it. And I think it was like 22 million dollars two years ago. Won't pass. People could say it would be better that if it would. But for a variety of reasons, it didn't pass. Um, then we've had trying Pleasant Street. Pleasant Street, very cheap. There's no reason why a government office has to be a cultural icon. It doesn't have to be the Statue of Liberty. It's where you shuffle paper. If this town builds it, you have to do it by paying all the prevailing wage and the, the bidding. It doubles and probably triples the cost. Doesn't make any sense. So we had an opportunity that came out of nowhere where a thing was 95% done. It was done privately. And it's a heck of a deal. And it does the functional, not the cultural and historic. It does the functional of office work. Very good idea. Missed by what, 710 votes? Right? That's a problem. And when you're on the select board, you, you don't have the option of pontificating. You got to figure, we have to listen to the people and just so the comments that the select board has not reached out. I mean, the fact that we're all here and we've had a number of things. The select board, look at the agendas in the past. See the number of times, times that the town hall has been on the, um, on the agenda for select board meetings, which are publicly posted. And everybody's welcome to come. You're welcome to speak at it. We're trying to do that because our job is to listen to you. You know, you are the legislature. And it's difficult. So that's what we've been trying to do. I don't know what the answer is, but we're listening. We're here bringing you, the people who elected us. And we're doing things. As far as the cultural thing, last fall, I reached out to some people who, um, are part of this group and I said, you know, figure out a way that we can take Highland Avenue if we move elsewhere, figure out a way we could turn Highland Avenue into a nonprofit historical use. Lots of advantages. Number one, you, 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 you could do it without the problems of public bidding. And all those costs, which rise to the cost to, to the three times. Makes some sense. We would keep the historic. It's, it is a challenge. It's not fully finished. Nobody's things, but it is an idea that now it's been rolled out and people like it. They like it. They'll be brought to a vote. So I think personally, I think that makes sense. If we could not have, it would be wonderful if the two-year project from two years, which is beautifully executed and, and it was comprehensive. All you had to do was listen to Mark about all those little things that you don't really think about, but are really part of the, of what happens. Um, I used to run old buildings in Boston. I know a little bit about it, but not nearly what perspective that Mark has. So we understand that. Town's not willing to pay for it. So now we're back to where we are now. And I just think that people should be aware that all of your concerns, and I've heard them. And there's a reason you're all here and there are a reason you're doing that because we want to listen to you. But we've all discussed that as well in a variety, and most of the discussions have not been in executive session. If you go back, you can look at the number of times on public select board meetings that are properly posted. We have discussed this. It's very difficult, but I think as a town, we should all be grateful that we care enough for this wonderful town that we're all here. So thank you.
Any more colleagues before me? No. Okay. So I, I'm just going to, um, piggyback off what Jack just said to the point of executive session since the, uh, special election uh, ballot in November. We've had two executive sessions discussing exemption number three negotiations with regards to real estate. The rest of the executive sessions have been regarding, uh, negotiations for the oyster farm and our situation with Cohasset Harbor. So I just want to clarify that to Jack's point. You can look at our agendas. We have had conversation about town hall ad nauseam. We're feeling some fatigue from it as I'm sure most of all of you and the rest of the citizens of Cohasset since town hall has been a conversation going on since two thousand and eight. And, um, we would love, we would love to, to get it done and then move on with new and fresh business for the town. Uh, regarding the comment about maintenance budget, um, I didn't bring my budget binder with me, but I believe the facilities budget is and Christine, you're, correct me if I'm wrong, around two and a half million. Is that about right? Somewhere around there, two, one, and just, just, and, and that's for the whole, for the whole town, for a variety of projects that get put forth. And I just read from two thousand seventeen, I was looking up in town report, the facilities department completed 700 projects. So 700 maintenance projects across the town, 23 buildings require maintenance and, and, and they did it. So there is funding. Now, we can go back and argue, was it the right, you know, maintenance project at the time or not, or there were the right advocates for certain things at the time or not? We can't, we can't un-ray that belt. The other mechanism for funding maintenance we have is the capital stabilization fund, which is funded at about 1.9 million dollars a year. And other maintenance, um, for the town that is, um, needed goes through the capital stabilization process. Uh, we have several members of that committee here and goes to town meeting for a vote. So the townspeople vote on the capital projects that get done and it's, it's departments and it's people that bring forth those projects to town meeting for approval. I'd like to, to just comment. I liked Mr. Longley's point about perception. Okay? Life is about perception. And I just want to give my perception of a couple of, of your comments and we can see how sometimes our language can, can sway us one way or the other, because at the end of the day, we're all trying to sell an idea, right? The perception of the town hall is too small, even though it's large than One Pleasant Street. The perception that town hall is too small, even though it's large than One Pleasant Street. I think our perspective is that town hall is inefficient. The annex is inefficient space for conducting um today's governance. There's a lot of space in that two-story building that's hallways, that's unusable and cutouts and corners and things like that. And One Pleasant Street offers a single floor, single hallway, no elevator. So you kind of have to look at the, at the actual office space to office space. And and in my opinion, in my perception, pull out unusable space in in the annex. I think we're beyond the fact that the annex is unappealing. We're not looking for um a Taj Mahal. We want functional, safe space. And and that's all that it that it's about. So that's not even a criteria that I can recall any of us talking about. Code compliance, um, it was mentioned in the citizen's petition that in phase three ADA issues would be addressed. And I'm not an expert by any any means. I, and hopefully someone can correct me. I think you ADA issues, if you have projects, have to be addressed at the beginning, is that? They're they're, they they don't? Okay. It was my perception that they did. If you're gonna do a project, even if you space it out over time, your ADA issues have to be addressed.
It depends what the scope items are. A number of scope items, such as replacing any HVAC equipment or putting a new roof on, those are exempt from the calculus.
Okay, okay, thank you for that. My perception was incorrect, going to the point that about um perception. And I'd like to applaud the cultural, the Cohasset Community Cultural Group. I think that's a new and innovative way to do it. And it's my my feeling, um, you you know, having town hall on the common is a is a very romantical idea. Okay? And it comes from some, you know, I understand it because I live in the house I grew up in. So I understand hi- history, I understand, you know, what it feels like to to be home, to be, you know, in in a place um that it should always be. But at the end of the day, we have to do what's right. And the town's demonstrated over the last at least fifteen years, they don't want to spend money. The town doesn't want to spend money on town hall. The town voters don't want to spend money. And so I'm curious as to the citizens group, one of the original comments was um the million dollars a year would not come from an override. And I'm curious as to where that money would come from. So that's a question, if you'd like to answer it.
It would be like any project, any, in fact, all the projects, in fact, we do in town, which are in fact involve money, go through the capital budget committee if a capital projects. This would be a capital project. There are three capital projects listed. It's no different, it's always the same. It either goes through the capital stabilization fund, as many as many do, or the money comes from free cash, or some of it might come from the Community Preservation Act. Those are the three. That's the way all projects are done. This is no different than all the other projects, whether they're schools or whether they're the library or any other building in town, it's always the same, they're capital projects, they go to the capital budget committee, and they get funded one way or the other. It's the same. Nothing different.
Are you done, Ms. Fox?
I'm done.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to, um, Mr. Fox.
So um, I haven't looked here as long as Alan, but in the time that I had looked here in Cohasset, I've seen a number of these town hall projects get developed, posed, and then failed. And and it seems like, and both Jack and Alan mentioned this, there's a a real tension between trying to preserve the dignity and the history that is town hall at Highland Ave on the Common and the fact that we're cheap. So I I do appreciate that there are some real efforts here to try to navigate that. So one citizen's petition says set a budget, stick to your budget. Uh, I think there are some good questions about whether the contractors that you're talking to could come through and deliver on those budgets. I think when we get to the bid process, that that'll come through. But I I think it would be in your interest to try to bury that out a little bit, try to get some of that in writing, so that we can really hold people's feet to the fire if we get to that point. The, I'm gonna mess up the name again like everybody else.
I think the cultural center.
Thank you. Proposal uh is is compelling, because it's another way to try to preserve the history and dignity of town hall in a way that would be more cost-effective. But I also want to touch on One Pleasant Street, because One Pleasant Street is in the mix, because not because someone lives near it, and multiple people live near it. And I do want to have a conversation with you about why there is some perception that there's a financial interest in that. It's cheap. That's why it's on the table. It's a cheap place to shuffle papers. That would now give us the opportunity to do something with historic town hall at a lower cost. Because when we've tried to do something with historic town hall at a higher cost, it's failed. So that's why it's on the table. So I think select boards before us and this select board are really just trying to navigate that, to find something that respects the dignity and history that we have in town hall in a way that's gonna pass and that we can execute on. That's all this select board and select boards before us have tried to do on the session.
Few things I heard. A couple of people that we attempted to do or this board attempted to win and run. Even local acid, trying to get what we wanted in One Pleasant Street. I find that disingenuous a vest. We actually came back with a new proposal and trying to address town hall. Everybody here, I'm assuming in this room, was fond of Forty-One Highland Avenue. Personally, I have no sentimental attachment to it. It's just a building. But I understand that people like the building, it's been there since eighteen eighty-seven, I believe. And what we tried to do without executive session, mind you, was to meet publicly, in public session, and every one of our gen items, practically every other one, if not everyone, is a town hall update. Everybody was welcome to attend, and it's a pleasure to see how many people came out. And I'm fascinated with the cultural creative center. I know I got that wrong. Sorry. But I think it's a fantastic plan. It's a beautiful building, we do all want to see it. But we're looking at Austin. Again, it's not an end run. Now we went from a whole building, in all honesty, that at One Pleasant, that lost by ten votes, passed the town hall. Now that building is now condos. I could, I could surmise, what could we have done with those condos? Could have sold them and paid for the renovation of Forty-One Highland Avenue and paid for the town hall at one, one fell swoop. But we didn't, all right? It lost by ten votes, but it passed the town hall. So what are we trying to do? There's also another key component. We have town hall employees that work very hard, preaching every one of us every single day in a building that is not serving its purpose anymore. I don't know what the citizens petition plan are doing with them on this ongoing three, five to ten, however the project went, I'm hearing three. Were we gonna juggle them all over the place? We have to find a place for them. We're losing our town employees by nutrition and by their finding better places to work. And these people work for us every single day. These are the people that people come down and bother and ask and look for services and advice. So that's the human element. And Mr. Cameron was spot on when he asked about that. What do we do with them? So this board did try to find a place. One Pleasant popped up on us. It was there, we grabbed it without executive session. So my thoughts of this, we are four hundred forty-one, where we lost the ball is coming up with an option for forty-one. But there were a lot of balls moving at that time, as they still are right now, because we're back at it. And this is why we're having this forum. Again, so we're not in closed session, we're not doing it on our own, we're asking for advice, for help, and for uh consensus. And that's where I leave it at, and thank you all for showing. Really nice to see.
Um, so I did want to echo the thanks, uh, whether I agree with you or not, I appreciate that you're here participating. And um, I just wanted to answer a few questions too that have been directed to the select board. I'm gonna start with the archives, because I know that's near and dear to the hearts of some. With respect to the archives, we have talked about if we moved to One Pleasant Street, other places that we could house the archives, including the basement or our um existing police station on Elm Street. The basement of the library, I should be more clear. And we could, you know, for example, escort people down there if need be with the help of an officer to the extent that there's any concern about, you know, being alone, so to speak. You know, from what I understand, this is accessed about months and months. So I think that we can find a responsible way to address that, so that's fact point one. Fact point two is with respect to the questions about One Pleasant Street. Ms. Jenkins, I take your point about the HOA. It actually would be a condo association that we'd have to look through. And we've directed town staff to begin working with town lawyers to figure out what options, if any, we need to consider, to the extent the town pursues that option. So I'm just going through some of the logistics that have been raised. With respect to the money, uh, and this is what's near and dear to my heart. With respect to the money, I think this is sort of the elephant in the room that we've been circling around with respect to all of these options. Personally, it would be great if we could find a way to stay at Forty-One Highland and get the town to support it, that would be great. But I think staying at Forty-One Highland is gonna take a minimum of probably ten million dollars. So unless people are willing to pay taxes, because that's the only way we can fund it. We're not gonna fund it through free cash. We're not gonna fund it through capital stabilization. We're not gonna fund it through CPC funding in its entirety. We simply don't have that money. I know I'm on the financial planning committee, I know the finances of this town very well. We've already had the long-term finance committee assess um some of the points. And their immediate conclusion is this is a tax increase. That's the only way to responsibly fund it, because if you strip capital stabilization of a million dollars a year, then we don't have things like police cruisers and other unnecessary equipment that we continually fund out of capital stabilization. So um, I think the reality with town hall is if the citizens of this town want to stay, they're gonna have to be willing to pay at least ten million in taxes to do a minimal repair. And why I say a minimal repair is at the end of the day, I actually think that the numbers that the town has gotten, town staff has gotten, are going to be almost the same as the citizens petitioners. When we line up all the costs, when we do the diligence, when we include soft costs, when we include contingency, when we hear from the inspector general of Massachusetts that we can't just unbundled to avoid OPM law, we're gonna learn that the numbers are about the same. The numbers are probably eight to ten million, and by the time we get done fighting about it, it'll probably be a year from now, it will only be on ten million. I think that's probably gonna be the reality of what these costs are, because I appreciate that the petitioners are trying to find ways to save us money. But when you get right down to it, uh, Mr. Cameron is entirely correct that we can hope that we could get a sort of price in the middle, but we know where we live. And we also know who in fact showed up to bid last year and what the prices were that they actually gave us. The prices that were being quoted by friends are not the people who actually came to bid on the projects in Cohasset. They're doing projects in the other cities and other places, and they did not in fact come to bid on our town hall last year. And so to me, it's, you can say one thing, but what you actually do and what the prices we get are what matters. And just to illustrate that, we did ask town staff to go back and get a bid on roofs to figure out, okay, where exactly are we on roofs? Let's just have a litmus test of the prices that we got in April of two thousand twenty-three. If we were trying, if we were gonna try to separate out what is the actual fact, just by using the roofs as an example. So in April two thousand twenty-three, we were told two hundred and seventy thousand dollars was the component of the roofs for all of town. Mr. Brewer indicated a hundred thousand, I believe, based on.
There's a range of prices based on my research, but the most recent one I got today for almost exact same roof was a hundred thousand for our roof size.
Okay, so you got a hundred thousand, and then we went out to the market and asked for an estimate, and we got an estimate based on our actual town hall roof of two hundred thousand, but with the caveat that that depends on the roof being right now in relatively good shape, without rotting or leaks or any of that. And so this is information we're trying to process in real time. It shows that, you know, what we're getting from the April two thousand twenty-three bid may or may not be correct, depending on the condition of our current roof when they start to unpeel it, that what Mr. Brewer I'm getting, uh, what Mr. Brewer is getting is probably close, but with a lot of caveats too. And that, again, we're ending up somewhere close to each other, but we're landing probably on the hotter side, because we're in Cohasset and because the town hall is not in great shape. So anyway, I think the point is that, I think, again, at the end of the day, even if we're trying to do the sort of um more conservative plan, we're gonna find that it is gonna lead to a lot of extra work, bids that are higher than we expect. It's gonna be several years. And what it's also probably gonna require too, in order to fund this, if we try to break it out into phases, is another special tax through stabilization fund. So if we're talking about a million dollars a year in a special stabilization fund tax, that equals, based on FY two thousand twenty-two prices, a two hundred and sixty-five dollar tax increase for every million dollars that your home is assessed. So that's somewhere in between the road and the school tax that we just assessed. So we're looking at that over the course of probably however many years we need to keep that tax increase up, because you can't take a million dollars out of the capital stabilization fund. You might be able to mitigate some of it with CPC funding, but not not that much. You're likely gonna need a tax increase, whether you do it as a debt exclusion or stabilization fund. It will be a tax increase. In terms of where I am from like just a a personal level, in terms of everything that um, well, I don't bring my personal uh thoughts into it. I'm, what I'm trying to do is figure out what will a majority of the people reasonably support. That has been the hardest part to try to figure out in Cohasset. And one of the conclusions that I came to with respect to One Pleasant Street was that people are willing to entertain an option that is not on the common, but they do want to see Forty-One Highland taken care of, which is why we've been considering all these other options that are out there. And so in an ideal world, I would love to see that we could get One Pleasant at a reasonable price and we could have, house our municipal services there and that we could move forward with the community cultural center plan at no cost to the residents. And so that would mean no tax increase. We would have our municipal services safely housed on a first floor. And we would have Cohasset have a center that in fact, I think, is what people in their heart of hearts are trying to recreate. A place for the community to meet. It would be the meeting house that in fact is the historic aspect of Cohasset. People aren't fondly remembering paying their taxes. What they are fondly remembering are the, you know, the contests and the drama and the puppet shows and the craft fairs. That's what people talk about with town hall. When people talk to me, that's what they remember, those are their fond memories. It's not fighting over an assessment, asking for an abatement. That's not what's driving the nostalgia, at least from what I see. So I do think that the community cultural center affords us that ability to do that. I would love to say that the town could do some sort of hybrid. I think that's gonna be, and when I say that, I mean that we stay in Forty-One Highland, plus we do some sort of community cultural center. The reality is it's a small space. If we still continue to house all of our municipal staff in there, there's not gonna be a lot of room for cultural activities, there just isn't. So I think that is a good idea, I'm not sure how realistic it is. So again, what's driving uh my idea at the end of the day is just trying to figure out a way to um appreciate that people are very sensitive to paying higher taxes above the town hall. But also they want the town hall to provide some quality of life for them. And I think that some sort of option like the community cultural center plus One Pleasant. Or if One Pleasant doesn't go through, somewhere else may work. And if somewhere else doesn't work, what we. And if somewhere else doesn't work, what we may end up with again is a tax increase that we're staring at for ten million dollars. If people voted down, they should know that voting down means that you're voting for a ten million dollar tax increase. Where things get so bad that we'll be over a barrel and we just have no options. Um, and I think as long as people are okay with that, then it's a, it's a, you know, representative government and that's where we end up. But going into town meeting, I think everyone who cares about town hall should know that if you want to keep it on the common, that's the likely price. Um, so I think right now the question is, well, how is the select board going to move forward? We're gonna move forward by meeting on Tuesday and continuing to work through this issue, including getting updated information from one Pleasant Street. I suspect my fellow members will probably digest everything we've heard and try to figure out practical next steps on forty one Highland and what exactly that means. Um, in terms of where we're gonna go next, including with respect to the warrant, whether we think it makes sense to move forward with the warrant article now. For this town meeting cycle or if we want to do something later. So that's where we are, um, but we always welcome your feedback. We do pretty much have town hall on every agenda and continue to talk about it as information evolves. So you're all welcome to come to our meetings um and go from there. So thank you very much.
May I, may I?
Yeah.
There was talk a while ago in those meetings I was a part of about a questionnaire attack, that he wasn't about a questionnaire. So it's under that.
Yes, we, we actually have one in the works, but we wanted to hold until this forum was over with to figure out if there was anything we needed to consider or add. So I expect to be discussing that in our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks. Well, thank you both.